So let me welcome everybody to the Select Board Meeting of November tenth, two thousand and twenty. I'll go over the agenda at seven o'clock. We'll have community input, seven oh five, the LEPC update, seven fifteen, COA Director of the Proposed Reorganization of the Board Due to Angela Smith's Retirement. Seven thirty, the Tax Classification Hearing, which I think we're going to be postponing until the November twenty fourth. Eight o'clock, the Land Use Reorganization Working Group. Eight thirty, the Town Administrators Report. Eight forty-five Liaison Reports. Eight fifty-five Approval of Minutes and Warrants and a new all-time, short-duration meeting, nine thirty adjournment. See if we can make that. So let me first ask, is there any community input tonight? I don't see any. So let's go right to the LEPC Update, Chief Fisher.
Good evening. Thank you very much. So LEPC, of course, met Monday. And we had a couple of major items we discussed on the agenda. Obviously, the governor came out with new guidelines last week. We discussed those guidelines. There are really very few tweaks from the guidelines needed mentioning here in Carlisle. I feel like we're really doing things safely here. And I know it sounds a little bit redundant and self-serving, but I think that we are from a planning perspective, but it really, the credit goes to the residents and their willingness to adhere to these guidelines. A couple of things did jump out. Most folks, most of the department has reported that nobody out for quarantine for exposure. We do have two out at the Police Department that were reached out to by contact tracing because they were at innocuous places and anyway, we have them out. They have no symptoms and should have the test back in the next day or two. And and then a good part of the meeting, we spoke about the great work that the Council on Aging and the Carlisle Neighbor Response Team is doing, specifically the plans around the Thanksgiving holiday. And many, many Carlisle residents have taken advantage of the fantastic work of the COA and the Carlisle Neighbor Response Team. And things are a very good plan for meal distribution in a safe fashion that, well, should still be fun and good. And I think that's all I have from the ten thousand foot level, but half of you, of course, are LEPC members, so you can tell me what I forgot and hold me accountable. So anything, anything I forgot?
Just, just a reminder to people that if at all possible, try not to travel over the holidays so we can avoid the quarantining or testing that might have to be done when you return. We're trying to keep people as available as possible for the workforce. And so if you don't need to travel, please do not.
Yes, thank you very much. Any questions from anyone, thoughts, concerns?
I'd say I don't see a lot of people on the participants list tonight, so probably public announcements necessary since we were all there. But the, of course, the idea now that we all should be wearing masks in public, whether you're inside or outside. And so we're going to try to be a little more fastidious about that. I was out a couple of times today and realized, oh, I don't, I don't have my mask on. And I felt badly about that. I was afraid that someone was going to drive by and chastise me. But we're try to remember to have a mask with you so that if you are outside and near anybody else, you have your mask on.
Thank you very much. I've got to jump off. I've got an emergency call in the region. Sorry.
Thank you, Chief. All right. Any questions from anybody else? So those of us who were at the meeting, we could probably answer for you. Most of you are at the meeting, so I guess that's not an issue. All right. Joan, COA Reorganization.
Okay.
Good evening. Thank you for being here.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me on the agenda. I just want to point out that two of the board members of the COA are also with us, Ann Quennen, who's the Chair of the Board, and Vernon Gilbert, who is the Secretary of the Board. And, you know, they were very helpful, as was Abba, the former Board Chair, when I was developing the proposal that I set to you. So in summary, or to, you know, to go through the bullets, everyone knows that Angela announced her retirement, Angela Smith. So she's retiring on December eighteenth after fourteen years of service. And she really held almost two separate positions within the COA. Her title Outreach and Program Manager, but so she was doing outreach and social services as well as organizing and executing the majority, if not all, of the programs, activities, and services that we were providing to seniors. So the retirement, you know, obviously got the team thinking about what would be a good way to move forward. And, you know, the configuration of the COA, when I took over six months ago, was two full-time people, the Director and Angela's position, and then five part-time positions. So we have Transportation Coordinator, two Program Assistants, and two part-time social workers. And thinking about it, I really noticed that several of the staff could be very helpful if we added hours to them and made them full-time instead of part-time. Specifically, the new social worker that we hired, Carol, who has done an excellent job so far connecting with seniors. And I've been really impressed with her skillset. And Linda Cavalo Murphy, who's been the Program Assistant, trained by Angela for the past eight years, who is really good in terms of programming and reaching out to seniors and organizing the activities and following up and documenting. And so I spoke to everyone on the staff after Angela made the announcement and just asked them, you know, would you like more hours? Would you like to work full-time if we could? And they both said yes, that they were looking for full-time. They would love full-time, that they thought, you know, that would be a great idea. And the rest of the staff was pretty much happy with where they are. So, you know, it just seemed to me that it would make more sense from a departmental perspective, in order to be more effective and to serve seniors, you know, more efficiently, having more full-time people and fewer part-time people made a lot of sense. So that was really what the proposal is, is to change the configuration without really adding more cost to the general fund by moving, you know, in fiscal twenty-one, from two full-time and five part-time to three full-time and three part-time. And then in fiscal twenty-two, to three full-time and two part-time, as I'm anticipating that the eight-hour social worker will be retiring at the end of the fiscal year. So, you know, in addition, I don't want to keep relying on the state formula grant and the community chest long-term to be paying the salaries of COA staff. Right now, the way we got the new social worker was exactly that, that the community chess is contributing ten thousand. The town voted to contribute ten thousand in special appropriation. And then we have the state grant contributing the balance. But in my proposal, I'm trying to wean us away from being reliant on these, you know, non-guaranteed funding sources and trying to transfer some of the salary costs more to the, to the town without adding more funds to the town, which is possible because Angela had been here for a long time and is at a higher rate of pay than the two, the people that I'm proposing would become full-time. So basically, we're taking Angela's thirty-five hours and adding thirty-five point five hours between the two people that were becoming full-time and then a couple of hours to one of our program assistants who would pick up more administrative work so that the proposed program manager would have a little bit less administrative work on her plate. So I don't know if Ann or Verna want to add anything or weigh in. All right, so.
Questions? We can see Verna. But we can't hear her.
It sounded like a great plan to me because we have a excellent staff and they know the seniors. They don't have to be trained. And they want to be full-time. In fact, we might lose them if they don't get full-time positions. So for all those reasons, I think this is the way to go.
Ann has your hand up.
And you have to unmute yourself.
I thought somebody had control of it. How nice that I did. I'd just like to say that as a longtime member of the Friends of the Library Board, the library went through a similar circumstance years ago. You all may remember. They were, it was all part-time workers. And, you know, Martha essentially just became a training ground. Gleason became a training ground because people would come and work and loved it here but would leave. So so hiring full-time workers, especially staff who want to stay and who want to work for Joan just makes a lot of sense to me in, in every aspect.
Is there any questions for any of the, either Joan or the board members?
I, I have a question, and that is when you say that it doesn't add anything to the, I guess, the town's operating budget. Were you accounting for the benefits that would be had, that would be added to the new full-time or not?
Well, one of them, obviously Angela's benefited. So one of them would be a swap for that. So yes, there would be one more benefited position. So to the extent that, you know, they, they take the insurance and they have the vacation and the personal, et cetera, there is an added cost there, which I couldn't really quantify on the spreadsheet because I don't really know. I asked Priscilla for like, is there a percentage? Is there a factor I should put in? And she said, you know, everyone's different. I happen to know that these particular people are not going to take health insurance because they're on their husbands. But obviously, that doesn't mean that somebody couldn't change that in the future. So there would be one more potentially than, there would be one more benefited position and whatever that costs the town would be part of this proposal.
And I, my other question is, in terms of programming, I know you run a lot of, you know, classes and things like that. How much coordination do you have with recreation? And is there, is there some of that that could just, just be simply offloaded to rec, the rec department so that that's one less job that you have to do? Or is it?
I mean, in the six, you know, it's been different during COVID, but in the six months that I've been here, I don't feel like we've coordinated anything with recreation. You know, I mean, I haven't seen us doing that. So I feel like Angela's always run them ourselves, you know, registered them, advertised them, you know, implemented them. So I don't, I'm not sure what. You know, are you talking about like the, the overall system of just sort of keeping track of who's doing what?
Well, kind of, yeah, because I don't know what Holly's workload is like, but it just seems to have parallel, you know, programs. And if so, somebody wants to take a class and they're looking in the rec department, they don't see anything for themselves because they don't know that they should be looking at the COA for their class. You know, it just doesn't make too much sense to me. So I don't see why that couldn't all be put into one, you know, one basket. As long as we're doing reorganization, I think we ought to think outside of the box and outside of the departments as well.
Well, I can't speak to Holly's workload. I mean, I don't know. We've never, we've never raised that or talked about that as a, you know, as an efficiency. So I don't know what kind of capacity she has. But what we're doing with the programming, it's, it's much more than, I mean, registering people and, you know, keeping track of who's paid is a pretty small piece of it. There's a lot of moving parts in terms of figuring out who the speaker's going to be. Where's the venue going to be? What's the food going to be? I mean, there's so many things that go into it that take a lot of time. It took a lot of Angela's time. I would be pretty surprised if Holly or someone in her department could just, you know, handle that. So, I mean, I don't know if anyone else wants to weigh in.
Yeah.
Has this gone to the Finance Committee as well?
Tim's suggestion to me was that I would bring it up here first, and then I would contact James and have a conversation with him once I see how it goes here.
Very good, because this is relatively short-term in terms of December. And I mean, I think the, the twenty twenty-two fiscal year, well, obviously will be part of the general budget process, but the, I think we need to move forward. And again, you're showing savings there, so I suspect it will not be a major issue, but something at least we ought to contact. I know they're meeting Monday night. And whether you can get on their agenda for that or not, I don't know. But if you want, I can contact Jim as well if you want me to and see if that's there, because I think, I think we need to address these relatively quickly. At least for this, this year.
Yeah. Well, right. And, you know, if there was a problem or a holdup, then I was going to request that we could at least have the funds available to, you know, temporarily have Linda and Carol covering Angela's responsibilities. Because if they stay part-time and then it's just me full-time, I, you know, I don't want anybody to experience a lapse in.
Right. Well, and as I say, if possible, it's, it's nice if we can do it once instead of twice. And that would be a good thing. So if we can get, get the Finance Committee involved quickly, just to get their input on it, that would be very useful. We do have at least two more meetings of the Select Board between now and December eighteenth. So we've, we've got time to do that. But I think we ought to try to coordinate with them as much as possible.
I'd like to just, you know, make a couple of comments or have a couple of questions, too. So, one, I applaud you for, you know, taking this opportunity to sort of look at how the whole COA Department works and, and see if there's a way to do it more effectively and also to retain, you know, really good staff. I think that makes a lot of sense. You know, I, I would like to just encourage you to follow up on Kate's idea, though, of even just having a conversation with Holly, not so much about whether she would be able to take over the sort of arranging of events, but more the, you know, why not use a single system for people registering and paying? And you know, that's, it just seems to me that there might be some efficiency of, of, you know, having a single system to do that. And since it doesn't sound like it's been explored before, I think it would be worth it. And sort of related to that, I was wondering about the Board of Health. Because I know you have some, you know, overlap around things like the flu clinic or, you know, other kind of quasi-health-related matters. So how do you, how do you see the sort of coordination or integration or support between the COA and the Board of Health around the health issues that they're responsible for?
Well, so far, it's mostly just been, you know, COVID plans and the flu clinic has been what I've interacted with Linda on, you know, so I haven't. That's all I've noticed in the six months. And in the flu clinic, I mean, we were really reaching out to seniors. We were registering them. We were taking the lead on, you know, sort of rounding up the usual suspects because we have lists from year to year. These are the people that do this, and these are the people that do that. So we kind of facilitate, but, you know, they're the ones that figure out, you know, this is how many doses we're getting. This is what we're getting then. This is how we're, you know, this is what we want the seniors to bring with their insurance. So it's, you know, that was really the only project that we really have done together since I've been here. So I'm not sure.
Yeah.
You know.
And so things like the podiatry clinic or the, are those things that end up connecting between the two?
No, no, the podiatry clinic, like right now, we are just having people go to the doctor's office and then the friends are paying part of the cost. The doctors are billing us. And the seniors are giving us checks for twenty-five dollars. So we're doing all of that ourselves and we're using some volunteers. I mean, we had to submit plans to Linda about, this is how we're going to do it. This is the protocol. So we had to give her the COVID plans. But in a non-COVID time, I think we were just doing it at like one of the rooms in either Benfield or
Stairs.
Yeah. Yeah. And it was, so no, I mean, I don't think, I think we were functioning pretty independently.
Again, I just, I, you know, I guess I, you know, I think it's, it's important for, for boards departments that have some overlap, you know, in services or responsibilities to be, you know, coordinating with one another. And, and so I just thinking this whole restructuring that you're doing, which again, you know, to my non-professional eye, makes a lot of sense. I was just thinking, if you haven't had a conversation with Linda, maybe that would also be a good thing to do.
No, absolutely. I do know that when we would have the lunches and we would have the blood pressure clinic, I believe Trish would go and do that because that's what she did in Lincoln. So I think it was the same kind of idea. So we would have the public health nurse available to take people's blood pressure. Yeah. No, I'm happy to have a conversation with Linda.
Yeah. And just how the, like, I'm just thinking about how the social worker outreach works vis-à-vis what the nurse, the public health nurse does, you know, and whether there's any sort of, you know, conversation or overlap between the two.
Well, there is. If we get a call in, I mean, I've had this and Carol's had this. If we get a call that, you know, somebody's not well, or somebody is worried about their mother, or something's, you know, something's gone on that's kind of acute, we always call Trish and ask her to follow up with the person.
Yeah.
A lot of the time she calls them and then says, you've got to call your primary care, or you've got to go to Emerson or whatever it is.
Yeah.
But so we refer to Trish if there's anything medical, you know, that we are concerned about at all. So we do, we do do that.
Yeah.
I also think that David, according to Angela, I believe, and maybe Verna or Ann knows this, but I think that David Klein did talk to Holly at one point about trying to integrate the systems. And there may have been a reason or a barrier to that, but I'm happy to revisit it. But I do think it was raised at one point.
Yeah, most of the programs are actually pretty different because the, I mean, RecCom is mostly for the kids. And COA is mostly for the seniors. And in fact, we use my senior center for a lot of the information. And that's for seniors. And that actually makes our job much easier to have this main repository for a lot of information.
Might be nice, though, to do some more intergenerational activities. I mean, I know that's
We do.
Uh huh. Yeah. Um, so in terms of the timing on all of this, Joan, so ideally, you'd like to have this all happen over the next month, so you could put it into place before Angela officially retires.
Right. And she's, she's definitely said that, you know, she's sort of organizing all of her responsibilities into kind of buckets and then wants to know, well, who should I really train on this? And who should I train on that? And, you know, so we're just trying to
Yeah.
make sure that things don't fall through the cracks. Because as we talked about in our goal-setting meeting, a lot of the knowledge is sort of in Angela's head. And that's, you know, a tough place to be. And so I want to try to, you know, I don't want seniors to experience any kind of, you know, drop in services, which is going to be challenging because Angela is extremely dedicated and, you know, has done a lot for very many people. So we're, you know, I just think that to inject a brand-new person into the team and then keep all these part-time people who I think will then, you know, move on, doesn't seem to be a, a smart way to run a department if we have the choice to do it differently.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. And actually, I mean, the economic consequences are not horrendous at all. I mean, it's not like we're increasing the budget dramatically. If we can have some stability, as well as continue to provide the services, that's probably at least, you know, certainly in the short term. And although if you put people on part, full-time, you're not going to send them back to part-time in fiscal twenty-two.
There is one more point. If I, do you have another minute?
Sure. Go ahead.
Yep. I, I should have made this point before. The part about the joint, the social worker that's in Concord that also serves under-sixties in Carlisle. Okay, so that was from the community chess many years ago. And so we had a certain amount of hours of Bonnie Wilber's time serving the under-sixties. So those are people with disabilities, people that are having a financial crisis, mental health issues, whatever. As of the end of this fiscal year, June thirtieth, Concord is funding her a hundred percent themselves. And so that means that Carlisle does not have any support for the under-sixties that they used to have. Now, we have a meeting with Bonnie next week to kind of quantify that and go over it and try to get, you know, much more specifics on what that looks like. But we were, if, if things hadn't changed and Angela was just staying and everything was the same, we would have probably been looking for more hours somewhere to cover the under-sixties because there are people in the town who aren't seniors that need support. So part of the, what I like about this proposal is I think we can make it work between all of us without having to add hours and still be able to serve the vulnerable people in Carlisle who are not seniors. So that is something that would have cost more money. So, you know, I don't know if it would have been a five-hour-a-week situation. I mean, probably something along those lines. But, you know, it might not, it might wash with whatever the extra benefited position is going to cost. Because we won't have to ask for more. I'm pretty comfortable that between my full-time capacities, Carol's and Linda's, and then with the other part-time people, we'll be able to manage, you know, those needs and include them, incorporate them.
So Joan, David Modell here. Yeah, first of all, I also agree. I'm very creative. I think it's a win-win all around. You know, it's cost-effective, it's continuity, it's development for your staff. So it's all good. On that last, well, on, on a number point. So first of all, with the, the two position descriptions and the change in title and rate for the two people who are going to full-time, has this been run by Personnel Board? Do we need to? I'm not clear on that.
My process was, I started with Tim, and Tim suggested that we start here and then talk to the Finance Committee. And then, you know, I'm not sure in terms of the Personnel Board. Tim, do you want to weigh in?
Yeah, it would require Personnel Board action. My thought in having Joan come here first is that the COA falls under Select Board. You appoint the members of the COA. So you know, a lot, a lot of times, things have gotten to the Finance Committee level and they ask, well, what did the selectmen say? And someone has to say, well, I haven't been there yet.
Right. No, I agree with that, Tim. But they also ask, what does the Personnel Board say? So I think, I guess my advice is after we've presumably blessed it, which we will tonight, the I think it should go through Personnel Board, just to make sure wage and class and stuff is in line, because they may have, they may have adjustments, would have financial implications. And, you know, I agree with Chairman Lewis that the there's no financial implication immediately. Anyway, it's actually less money. So it shouldn't be an issue with the FinCon, but, you know, we just sort of, I think procedurally, FinCon should have all the information that they need so that they can approve. So that was one set of questions. Related to that, Joan, how did you set the rate increase for the people who are getting hourly increases as well?
Well, so for, for Carol, I, I kept her rate the same. So she came in at a, I think it was a six, six-one is what they rated her as outreach social worker when she was hired in the summer. And so all I did is just convert her to a salaried full-time six-one. So I didn't change her rate at all.
There's no rate in your spreadsheet. So, okay, fine.
Yeah, there is. Yeah, the grade and step.
Yeah. So, so her full-time.
Well, I see step, stepping grade. Okay.
Yeah. So her full-time would be, you know, fifty-eight, nine ninety-one, which was just sort of the, the salary amount that's under six-one on the, you know, the personnel grid.
So the personnel, okay, so that answers the question.
So I didn't change her at all. And for Linda Cavalo Murphy, what I did is I looked at, I had the listing of all the positions in town that fall in the different categories. And I tried to match up what I thought was most consistent with what the new responsibilities were. I mean, you know, I, it's possible that everybody has to start at step one when they change grades, which would mean that she would really be a five-one, not a five-two. But I put in five-two because I just thought that that was, you know, a fair salary for her. I mean, it's like, you know, two dollars an hour more than she's making now. But I, I tried to just be consistent with other, the responsibilities of other positions at that same grade level.
Right. So it seems like you've done your homework. So Personnel Board shouldn't have issues. Now, going back to the point you raised about the shared social worker for the under-sixty group does not appear on this list, correct?
Well, no, because we, the community chess has been paying for that. And so we've just been benefiting from it. So that has not come out of.
Right. But you have a line item. There is a line item for community chess support.
But that doesn't, I don't, that's not paying for this Concord person.
Oh, it's not anymore?
Community chess is paying for ten thousand dollars of Carol, who's the current nineteen-point-five-hour social worker. And then we have another eight-hour social worker named Peter, and they're paying five thousand dollars of his salary.
Right. So you cut it down for twenty-two. Do you think there'll be less Do you think there'll be less money available from community chess?
No, we don't know. And Verna wanted me to make this point. I mean, we've, it says that the fifteen thousand was an increase this year from what we had received the COA last year because last year we were sharing with pub, the Board of Health. So fifteen was new to us and I'm not sure if, if, if Peter retires, I'm not sure that they will say, well, we'll just take the whole fifteen and put it into Carol's position. They may, and that would be great. The head of the community chess is going to be on the call when we meet with Bonnie and we talk about sort of this Concord-Carlisle split. So she may see that as a reason to continue to give us funding and that would be great. So I don't, I, I think we could still get the fifteen, but I just wanted to be prepared in case we didn't that we have funds in other places so that, as Alan said, we don't, you're not going to take someone from full-time to part-time.
I agree with that. Um, and then, so on that, though, you're saying that regardless of funding source, you can manage the task of the under third, under sixties that Bonnie was doing with your, with your current staff?
With the proposed staff. So, right, if we get this proposal.
But I mean, it's the current staff with greater hours.
Correct. Yes. Because Carol has a lot of skills and I have done a lot of work with people with disabilities and people with mental health issues. And I'm very comfortable. I, you know, I don't know exactly how many people we're talking about that would come to the COA for help. But, you know, in Lincoln, it was a handful of people. I mean, maybe five or seven people that had needs and we were trying to help manage them. And I think that we could handle that without asking for extra staffing or hours.
All right. Thank you very much. No other question.
All right. Let me, uh, let me ask if there is, just so we can move things forward, uh, is there general support for, uh, at least the fiscal twenty-one, uh, reorganization? And we could, we could then go to the finance committee and say, yes, the board of selectmen or the select board, uh, i- is in general support of this. Do I have agreement on that?
Yeah. Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. All right.
For the, for efficiency's sake, because the FinCom will begin the fiscal twenty-two budgeting as well. I mean, I'm, I'm certainly willing to lend my support to the twenty, to twenty-two model.
I would too. I'd just like to get their input on it, uh, because they'll, they'll, they'll start that in January. Uh, and again, and, and the twenty-two looks a whole lot like the twenty-one, just with a little more detail to it. Uh, so I don't think that's a, a major stumbling block, but, uh, at the very least, I'd like to go be able to go to the FinCom and say the select board is, is in support of this. And, uh, and, and I don't think, again, I don't think they're going to have a problem since the money goes down, not up. And, uh, but, uh, I'd like to be able to do that. And I think it's, and because time is going to be of the essence here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. Okay.
Yeah. And again, you know, just make sure that the personnel board has a chance to take a look at it.
Yep. Yeah, absolutely. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Joan, Joan, thank you so much for, for a very well-prepared presentation as well.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, let's move on to item number three, which is the fiscal twenty-one tax classification hearing of.
I, I moved to open the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one tax classification public hearing scheduled for November tenth, twenty-twenty at seven-thirty PM for the purposes of continuing this hearing to Tuesday, November twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty at seven-thirty PM.
Do I hear a second? Good. All in favor?
Arnold, I.
Louis, I.
Yeah.
Modell, I.
Reed, I.
Thank you. And I don't think we have anything else to do on this, do we, Tim, to, for tonight?
No, no, that, the open the hearing and continue it.
Right.
Mister Chairman, since we are running ahead of schedule, and I, I noticed that Chief Fisher was back on the call. I had told him the board might be able to handle his cruiser request early on so that he could make it a bit of an earlier evening than usual.
Good.
Was amenable to that?
Good. And I, I do have a couple of questions on that. Uh, it looks like there are some duplications in the specification list, uh, Chief Fisher. Is that the case? The truck vault table extension and the wingtip. Uh, it's the first two items on the second page appear to be carried over from the last two items on the first page.
Dry erase wingtip.
This something we got email about?
Yes.
Yeah. Um, uh, I don't have it. I don't have it.
On mine, this is one of them.
Revision today.
Did you get the revision today?
Yes, I did.
Yes, I did.
Okay.
Yep.
So the, the wingtip and the truck vault table extension with dry erases, are those the two items that?
Yes. Yep. They appear to be duplicated.
P eight sixty-eight and P five sixty-seven.
Correct.
Uh, I don't see them on the first page.
They're, they're at the end of my first page. Well, well, okay. Well, maybe, ah, you know what I did? I took the one he sent before and I just copied the second page on it. So apparently those, they were a little different. Sorry.
Hey, yeah. Tim, do you have that handy that you could just email to me now?
Sure, sure.
I don't think I got it. Thanks.
Yeah, I'll send that to you.
Yeah. I mean, the, the thing is, if they're not duplicated, then the numbers come out wrong too. So, uh,
Oh, that I didn't check.
Yeah. And the other, and again, I, it's, it's, it's quibbling, but I mean, the two flashlights are twice the price of retail.
On the Strions?
Yes.
The, uh, so the, this is the, uh, this matches the setup that I have. The one, did you look at the piggyback with the full batteries?
Yes.
So you have two batteries, the light. Um, and then the mounting in the back in the waterproof case, that's the state bid price. I, I
No, I understand. It's not that.
I didn't look at the retail.
Again, I, I'm, I'm being, you know, picky. Uh, you know, the whole, the whole thing is when you're talking about a, a hundred dollars over on a fifty-six thousand dollar expenditure.
Yeah, I'm stuck with the prices because the pickup truck is thirty-three instead of fifty.
Yeah.
So it's.
Right. Yeah. The only, the only reason I did that is I, I happen to be a consultant to streamlights.
Okay.
Can you get them for us for free?
Probably.
Cut those out. We called you earlier.
It's not a big deal. Uh, okay. I, but I think this is why, I mean, it did, it is coming in under the quotes. I, I understand this is a state bid. Uh, this is nothing, there's a whole lot of discretion over. And, uh, and I would, uh, ask if we have a motion to approve. Or go ahead. If you've got questions, please ask.
Well, yeah, I mean, I have my same old questions I've been having about cruisers for the last fifteen years. Can, can you? It gets a lot of visibility and a lot of questions in the, you know, chattering side of the community, whether it's social media or other about our, you know, continually buying new cruisers and why are we doing that? We're not that big a town. So I guess Chief Fisher, you got to walk us through again, like, why do we need a new cruiser?
I mean, we're finally getting to a spot. Five years ago, I had a commitment to get our vehicles under a hundred thousand miles. So when you go out back and you jump in the car to go in emergency, like we had a missing three-year-old today and all three of us happened to be in the garage at the same time. And when you go out to your car and you turn the key, you know, our average response time is three minutes in Carlisle. And I, you know, I won't even, I'm not talking about anybody else, but we're always the first ones at things. And let me tell you what that felt like when I got here and we only had one car under a hundred thousand miles. That's, it's just not where you want to be. And we don't trade our car, I mean, the, the car that, um, that, um, we're not technically trading it. We're selling it to a, uh, neighboring town on the trade-in price, um, which was approved before last budget cycle. It's a town that doesn't have much, but, you know, we're, we're getting rid of our cars with a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty thousand miles. Um, so we use our cars and they are not, they're not in the greatest shape when we, when we, um, when we're finished with them. But we start out with things that are and, I mean, if you want to compare us to local entities, we probably use our cars, drive them longer than any of our neighbors. And anybody that you could probably think of off the top of your head, other than, you know, smaller police departments that are pretty far away from us. Um, like the one we're sending the, the car to now. Um, it's just, it's one of the only things that we need that needs to be at the top of its game all the time.
So how many vehicles do we have in the fleet?
Seven.
And do we buy one every year? What's our usual?
So every once in a blue moon, we have a two-car year. Uh, this, um, this is a one-car year. Again, we're going to and I'm not positive, I'm meeting with Victor and I want to put the cart before the horse. So I have to look at the mileage again. I'm meeting with Victor for our first meeting uh, for FY twenty-two, uh, Thursday afternoon, I think. Um, and I'll look at the cars, the mileage, you know, where we are. Um, and we had one, you know, the reason we're out of cycle for the, every few years getting two is we had a car totaled with a deer hit a couple of years ago and it ended up being a two-car year because insurance replaced one. Um, so, you know, I, I, I wouldn't buy something if we, if we didn't need it, not to point out the obvious.
Don, what, what's the average time to a hundred thousand?
We get to a hundred thousand miles usually in three years.
And so do you, are, are the, the, you know, the, the zero to three-year-old cars are the ones that you're go-to cars? And then you've got backups?
Which is the, um, I'm sorry, I mean, talk over you.
No, go ahead.
So the three cars that are, that are the primary response vehicles
Yeah.
are the lowest mileage marked cars. This car is an unmarked. All right. So the unmarks go from me to the lieutenant and then to the back row. And we keep them for one year in the back row. The three cars that are in the, we call the front row are the black and whites. And then we keep two of those in the back row for spares when one's at the garage. And one is, um, always outfitted with the stuff for Sergeant Mack to respond to a regional emergency, like I had for that call that I, I took at the beginning of the meeting. He's not going tonight. He wasn't one of the people I sent. But, um, you know, we're, we're part of the region. So he has to have a car. So he comes in from home, grabs that car and goes. So we really keep one extra marked car and one extra unmarked car in case any of the vehicles are in the garage.
So basically
equipped the same.
Basically, you're saying from zero to three years, they get their hundred thousand. And then from three to six or seven, they put in another maybe fifty thousand or less.
Right. Depends on how many we have. Like, we, we lost two transmissions this year. You know, we had a couple of log hits that we had, uh, and then we had a significant event at a very serious incident here in Carlisle that, if the car was almost totaled, but then wasn't, not, not at the fault of the officer, at the fault of the defendant in the case. So, you know, it's that type of stuff that every once in a while trips us up. And so that car has low mileage on it right now. Cause it sat in a body shop for a month.
All right. Thank you.
General curiosity, is there a reason for the pickup truck this time?
Because, um, to buy the Tahoe like I normally get, the state bid has gone up and now I would be upside down. The pickup truck is three thousand dollars cheaper. It's a six-cylinder motor instead of the eight. Um, and to be honest with you, um, most of our unmarks go to Gary Davis and go to DPW and they'd rather have a pickup truck.
Okay.
I'm going to drive it and I don't really, that's not really that big a deal as long as I have my box and my table in the back for when I go to my serious events. So that's what this thing has. It's a basically a stripped, stripped pickup truck with some emergency equipment in it. And then when we get done with it, it'll go to Gary.
Okay. Interesting. That's, that's a good answer. Thank you. All righty. Do we have a motion?
I move, is it a contract or we just, we accept the bid?
Yes.
I, I move we accept, accept the bid for the new police vehicle.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote?
Arnold, I.
Louis, I.
Modell, I.
Reed, I.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Thank, thank you for taking it out. And now I'm going to go get some turkey pot pie.
No pizza.
No pizza here. Turkey pot pie.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
He's in training for Thanksgiving, I guess.
He's not traveling. All right. Item number four, land use reorganization working group.
David, you want to take the leave on that?
I'm sure. Um, okay. So we've been pretty busy. Uh, we've been meeting, um, every couple of weeks. That is to say, the, uh, chairs basically of the land use boards, uh, and, uh, Tim and Kate and myself. And uh, we've been looking at a few things in terms of best practice. Uh, one, one of which was kind of beginning to understand goal setting, which I'll talk more about. Uh, a little bit more about evaluations and how, you know, eventually you use goal setting as a way of evaluating what people are doing. And, uh, most importantly, I think, is just getting boards, the boards with common interest and needs to coordinate and see where they might be able to share some resources, cross-train, uh, do some things together, et cetera. Um, so that's been going pretty well. And then, um, Tim coordinated with Mark Way. You all may remember him. He did goal setting for us in the summer and he's a Carlisle resident and a professional, I think, uh, facilitator. So we had a few sessions. I, I attended one. Kate, you've been in two, I think. Alan, you've been in one. Um, the one I attended was great. You know, I think it really got to some, uh, interesting points about shared problems and how we might approach them. Um, some IT needs that are common across, some best practices inside of Carlisle with what, uh, John Mativie is doing as far as putting his documents online and an idea about going to other towns for best practices. So I'm pretty pleased with how it's all going so far. And now I'll turn it over to Kate. Maybe you want to be more specific on the things that, uh, you observed.
Well, I wish, um, the major thing that I observed was that, uh, although these departments are operating in silos, that when it came, uh, time to talk about the goals and this goal setting things, um, many of them had the same goals. Uh, so there, there's, there's the same needs and goals, you know, across those departments. And I think it was eye-opening for everybody. Uh, and one of the goals, of course, uh, and one of the neat, big needs was, uh, in IT. And when I say IT, I don't mean hardware. They have hardware. Um, what they don't have is consistent software, uh, where one department can talk to the other and see the other person's stuff. So, um, that is something I think that, um, that, you know, we as, as a select board will have to, um, have some discussions around and whether we, you know, what we need to do to support that development is, and it's been underscored, of course, because of COVID. And the other thing that I've, um, been notified about was this, and it's not only just in departments. I think apparently some committees are finding it difficult to, um, that, that they also need some IT. So that's, it, it, it was this, what I'm finding interesting is that where we started talking about reorganization of working group, it kind of morphed to talking about goals and evaluations and personnel. And it's, it's all, it's all kind of tied up in one big package. You can't really separate all the stands, strands. We have to.
Yeah, I would say I think you can, you can approach it, you should not disaggregate. They are all one thing. But I think what we've done and, and what Mark is doing now with the facilitization of facilitating, well, I know as a facilitator.
Sir, you're too cute.
If you, um, if you can get clarity on what your goals are, then you can naturally flow from that, the other things like
Yeah.
common purpose, common needs, how people should plan their work and then how they should be evaluated in what they do. So I think we're, I believe we're approaching it the correct way. I want to say one other comment you made. It's not just that they need common access. I think especially we're learning in COVID, but really because we are actually in the second decade of the twenty-first century now. Or maybe about the third, about in the third decade of twenty-first century. People expect that documents will be available online. And I'm talking about customers, which is the citizens.
Right.
That they'll be able to get on a website, pull a document, pull a permit or apply for a permit, you know, I mean, we are. We are behind and this is bigger than land use, but I think land use is maybe the pointy end of the spear. We're behind the times on that and so there is, and this is, you know, foreshadowing, I guess, for the Fincum who's not listening, but, um. We're gonna need to make some significant in- investment in the hardware and software, particularly the software. That this town has available to it so that we can offer that kind of. You know, modern service and especially because we're in a COVID environment where people are less comfortable going to town hall in person and shouldn't have to go to town hall in person. And handle paper and all that.
And so, um, David and Kate, how do we, how do we, um. Assess what, what body of people are, have the. Skill set to determine what it is we would actually need. In terms of software and also just sort of the, the management of, you know, the information. How do we figure out what we need?
I mean, certainly the, I'll take it first and then turn it over to Kate, I think. Certainly, we're in the process, right? The first thing is sit people down, what are your needs, like define your needs, right? So we're in that process. The second thing is what, you know, what's available out there, there are software packages out there to do these things and not just. You know, land use specific, I mean, document management is a, is a huge thing and there's tons of. Available packages, so that's another sort of assignment that. We take, some people are taking on. I'm always a believer in benchmarking and best practice, so. E- even in our discussion yesterday, a couple of. Towns came out that, you know, are already doing it and I'm sure there's probably fifty towns that do it pretty well if we looked around, so. I think checking out what other people are doing, so I think that's. That's the part that says, what do we need, the first thing is what do we need, second thing is what's out there to meet the need, the third thing is. You know, how do we coordinate the needs and that's part of this? And the fourth thing, which is maybe very significant is how, and you mentioned is how do we manage?
Right.
When we get it, right, and so on that score. Right now, we have Scott is working with our IT provider, Scott from the school is working with our IT provider and. You know, my, again, I have a school bias because I spent so many years there, but. You know, they manage six hundred Macs and all kinds of software programs, I mean, you can disaggregate what you're managing from the task of managing, right? They know how to manage hardware and software and keep up with licenses, so I mean, on that piece, which is a small piece. I would personally be looking for them to help us, you know, with a good organization. It's kind of like what John Fisher was saying. You know, with much bigger ticket items, but times a hundred, right, you know, instead of s- seven trucks you have to manage. You have to manage seven hundred, you know, suites of. Hardware and software. But once you have a system, it kind of, you know, works pretty well, y- you know what's coming due, et cetera. So there's a lot to do here, but, but I'm encouraged that, um, people seem focused on it and. And I'm anxious to hear what's available because I'm sure there's really good solutions out there that we.
So who's in your working group? That, but in addition to you, Kate and David and, and Tim, are you involved in it too?
Yes, yes.
Lee Tadish, uh, Lee Tadish.
Madeline Lee.
Madeline, uh, Madeline, um. Joyne Dancefield.
Tony Mariano.
Tony Mariano, Lynda and Sylvia.
Got it.
And I, I, I really feel that's. The, the, uh, goal-setting, um, exercise with, that was done with basically that same group, um. Well, actually, the, the working group that, the small group that David and I are working up with.
Yeah.
Do not include the staff.
Okay.
The goal settings did include the staff.
Right.
But, but was also very good was that I felt that the staff. Were saying the same thing as the chairs.
Right.
For all intensive purposes, so I don't. Don't think there's any conflict there that's, you know.
No, I agree, I agree, I think, I, I think it was very productive, we have another session, so I'm pretty happy with that. Then it's on the boards to follow up, uh, you know, I think. As, uh, Council Harrington says, I've said it probably other times in this, you know, on this broadcast. There's the daytime government, the nighttime government. You know, we're in the nighttime government and we all have things to do during the day, so it's, it's kind of a load for us to drive it. But because we're board members and not staff members, it is also our kind of job to. Lead, right, to, to lead with the vision we want, so I think we've. At least from my point of view and I think Kate shares it, you know, we're, this is a priority. Pretty for us, this is one of the things in the own session with Mark that we wanted to get this process rolling and I think that it. Turns out to be a bigger picture thing, which involves generally how you, you know, evaluate, how you set goals for people. In any function and how, how we. You know, track those goals and we evaluate performance and, and give feedback. It will be a better product for the town when we're done, I'm pretty confident in that.
I think another resource too that we probably don't use enough is, uh, the MMA and the MSA.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes.
Because they have a lot of, and, and as we get into, when you're talking about software, uh, we started getting into cybersecurity and they've, they've got a very well. Organized group, uh, dealing with that, and that has, that will have to be, of course, any part of any system we put in. And by the way, the network is coming along, I understand pretty well, there's, that's, the hardware is gonna be there.
So you, yeah, you raised two excellent points, um, one is. Cyber needs to be a part of any, any software we do, so that. The other thing is, and this is a question I've raised, but I don't know if I did remember the answer. The MSBA, the, let's see. Massachusetts School Board Association, the MSBA assigns a field liaison to every town. A go-to person you can go to to kind of help you steer through what's available, do we have that at the? MS, whatever it's called.
You, you have to request it, it's not, it's not, it's not a standing position, you, but they, you can request it and they will, they will work with you, they will assign somebody.
I could do that? I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to take it on with whoever, because I like to know what's available, but.
Yeah, I mean, and, and, you know, and you look at, especially in, you know, what sorts of packages do towns our size find both, you know, do the job and are reasonably priced to, to do it, uh. It's, it's not an easy choice, I know, and, and, and some of them, nobody's ever happy with.
There's, there's the virtual, um, meeting next year, um, that, the invitation has gone around, I don't know if you've signed up for that yet, David. But, um, last year, Alan and I went and I went to some very good, uh, workshops, um. It's gonna be virtual, so I don't know how it's gonna be this year, but I don't see why.
I guess I should look for that, I, I might have tossed it in many things I did.
It's in, Jen's is around, I think, but if you want.
Send me the link and I'll look.
Okay. And the, okay, so this all also ties in, you know, I know that, uh, Tim is having a meeting. But next week with the facilities managers of both for the town and the school and they're gonna be talking about that. Um, and doing coordination there and I think you had started, Tim, did you not, some discussions with, uh, Jim about doing something similar around IT with the. Trying to get some help. With the town.
Yes, and, and that, that's kind of been ongoing, uh, off and on for the past few years, Scott Hefner has helped us out, uh. A great deal in the past, he, now he's part of that networking project with the. You know. And RJ, and RJ, yeah, so he's, he's helping out a lot with that, so. There's nothing formal, but I mean, they, they've always been very generous with Scott's time and when, whenever he has time, he's, he's willing to help us, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we need a small. Task force or maybe something more formal for some of this, just to get some of this up and running. And, and, but, and it's more than up and running, I mean, we need.
Well, they're gonna manage it, yeah.
And managing and.
Using some of it, yeah.
Yeah.
Normalized.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that may, that may have personnel implications as well if we need an IT manager, yeah.
Again, it's something that the town, you know, may have to invest in and we, we are the ones that are gonna have to be the ambassadors for that.
Correct.
So just a question comes up, uh, on that, Tim, with everybody, with people working remotely. First of all, is the standard issue for a town hall employee a, a desktop or a laptop?
The replacement schedule, it, it is a desktop. Now, this year with COVID, we had to integrate about fifteen or sixteen laptops into that mix.
So people, so that's really the question, when people work remotely. Are they BYOD, are they using, in other words, personal device or are they using?
No, it's a town, yeah, town, yeah, everyone has a town machine for, actually, yeah.
So that's a big help.
Main weight, yep.
Yes, it should be.
As it should be, I agree, alright, thank you.
But, and, and I guess the other question, uh. Uh, which doesn't have to do with so much with the land use, uh, working group, or maybe it does. When, when things go online and when, when things get digitized, we need to place this, do we have a server or some, where, where, what, where's our memory? Our file cabinets, you know? Our electronic file cabinet and, you know.
Yeah, I, I think most of our servers are at the school now, we, we had that accident a few years ago with the flood. We had a project.
We're not using cloud-based storage, we're storing.
Yeah, I guess that's what I'm asking, are we using cloud-based storage, are we using something hard? And, uh, because as I said, I've. Separately, I've heard about a couple of committees that have, um, documents and things that they don't know where to file them. They don't, because they don't have a staff, you know. I'm thinking, for instance, Energy Task Force, and now the, the Master Plan Committee does have staff that we get through Gretchen and Planning Board, so I guess they. Can put some of their stuff there, but, you know, there are other committees that do generate documents, they need to put, put them somewhere for town access. So that's something that has to all be considered all.
And then you need, you need kind of a folder hierarchy, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, there needs to be a system.
Yeah.
But I, but actually, I'm, I'm pleased if it ends up that it's a dedicated server, because I don't think we're that memory.
Oh, you froze.
Froze, David.
Once the documents leave our control. You know, they can be hacked in.
Yep.
Yeah.
And suddenly your two acre plot is a acre and a half and who knows what, so you gotta be conscious of that.
Have you, have you made any progress, I mean, we've, we've talked a lot about the, uh, infrastructure aspects of it, we, part of the, uh. I thought you were working on was personnel issues, have you made any progress on that?
You mean in terms of the reorg?
Yes.
That's some, similar to, no. Uh, I don't think so, uh. But we are going to be canvassing other towns to see how they've done it, if they've done some sort of an umbrella or, you know. But we're, we're still down in the weeds of, you know. Uh, cross-training, yeah, just talking about cross-training all the staff, so. And talking about ideas about how we can, um, help them, help this. The heads of the departments manage their time better because of the staff were all cross-trained and could take a message and know how to do some of the. Diddly stuff instead of having to interrupt. The head, uh, every two minutes, that would be helpful and then possibly, you know, that's came as part of the goal setting to say, maybe you should, you know, not be jumping up. From your desk just because somebody walked in, maybe. Uh, people should be needing to make an appointment with you if they wanna see you, because they're, they're complaining they don't have enough time to do the planning and the conceptual. You know, the, the hard work, the important and the. Important work for the town, they're always putting fires out, they're always being reactive. David, you are totally frozen, I don't know if you want reboot or what, but.
You haven't moved in about four minutes.
Yeah.
Puzzled. There he goes, he just moved.
Alright.
He's back.
Alright.
Alright.
I got, unfortunately I have everybody on a device today.
Anything further?
It's a good start, I think it's, I agree with Kate, it's a good start, we have a lot of things to do.
While, while we're on this topic, uh, Tim, how did the Monday morning sessions go?
The, the, uh.
The training, goal setting.
Oh, no, well, I mean, from my perspective, it's going well, I've heard from some of the participants that they, they think it's, it's valuable.
Good.
Yeah, I think, uh. So far, so good, we get the third group on Friday.
Yep.
Yeah.
Get some curmudgeons on that one.
It was interesting because I was in the first two and they, they had different sort of complexions, you know, um, the types of goals, uh, were totally different, obviously. But. I think overall it went very, very well. It was well received by everybody.
Excellent. Alrighty, uh, anything further on? Land use boards, Bernie?
You're muted.
Oops, no, she's not.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yep, now we can. Now we can't.
Bad connection.
There.
Better?
Yeah.
Yes.
The Monday afternoon session I sat in on. Almost like a working session. I thought. For a couple of the members that were there was really. Walking them through how to do it, which was great. One other question for you guys, you mentioned on the agenda that it, it mentioned the town website, so any, any, uh.
Oh.
Any progress or anything to share about that?
Well, the town website, again, that was for, you know, having people. Being able to have access to records without having to come into the office and, and not having to disturb, uh, employees in order to get these things, so. The question is, again, you know, does our current, um. Contract with whomever has built this website, uh, will that? Be good enough to do what we need or do we need to be relooking at it? And I guess the other question, um, is, you know, the individual departments cannot. Um, manage their own. Page because they don't have the wherewithal, so one of the things was, we think one of the. Uh, employees in the land use might be able to do that and they would take over that. That job for those three departments, but maybe we need to be, again, as select. People need to be thinking about this townwide, you know, um, we need somebody who is in charge and capable of keeping everything updated and that is. That's a big job, it's not a small job and us, also for the volunteer boards, they can't manage. That stuff, they need to have some access to somebody where they could say, please do this for us.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, thank you very much and good luck, you've taken on no small task. Town administrators report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, the first item in my report attached to, to the packet, you'll see a, a letter from, uh, DEP. Regarding the Gleason Library, uh, recent, uh, testing of the nitrate levels at the library. No longer show an unacceptable level of nitrates and the DEP is terminating their enforcement order. The library have been dealing with this for the past four years and, uh. Doing everything the DEP has, has asked them to do and, and, uh, so that's a good result for the library. The second item in my report, we have yet another, uh, communication from DEP, good news this time. Uh, we're getting a small grant award, uh, from the Sustainable Materials, uh. Program, however, the, the award could have been larger if we had been able to check more boxes off on our recycling scorecard at the transfer station, so. We got about a three thousand dollar grant, we could have had nine or ten thousand dollars if we, uh. Were doing a better job, uh, down there, but, uh, I'm sure we'll be able to put the funds to good use, but, uh. You know, it's a work in progress like a lot of other things. At the moment, also, uh, attached, uh. To my report, you'll see that the public notices that'll be going out regarding the town's municipal aggregation. Uh, program, uh, this is in the product of a lot of back and forth, quite a bit of back and forth between Bob Zog and the Energy Task Force and. Colonial and wordsmithing the notices so that they pass muster with the Department of Public Utilities. Uh, they'll be going out later. This month, additionally, not attached here, there's another letter that Alan signed off on today, the, uh, I'll distribute that to the board, the. The, I'll distribute that to the board, the the kind of pre-notice letter that we're sending to all residents, informing them about the aggregation program in general, kind of trying to answer a lot of questions that people might have in advance. That'll be going out simultaneously, so we'll we'll get that out to you as as well. If they're really in final form, if anyone has any suggestions, I would say, you know, you can send them to me and we'll send them off to Bob and see if they can be accommodated, but.
I was going to say, if you have any suggestions, please keep them to yourself. Because we we can't send the letter out without having, if we cannot make any changes anymore on this without sending it back to the Department of Energy for them to reread it and recertify it. So this has been a certified letter. It's already been certified. So anyway, just saying.
Thank you. And item number four, you'll find a request from FRS for the annual green sale in the town common. And they have the permission of the Parish Committee for this. And they now seek the Select Board's permission, which has been granted in years prior. We have a suggested motion. Your action?
I didn't print that out. Somebody else who printed it out.
Well, if I can, if I can move it.
Well, you asked for a motion.
I've got it. I've got it printed. Yeah. Would somebody move that the Select Board approved the use of the town common by FRS on December 5th from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM for their annual green sale?
So moved.
So here a second.
I see David's mouth moving, so I'm wondering.
He's muted.
Oh, you said.
Thank you, Barney.
We're having hard times hearing you too.
Whole call vote, please.
Arnold I.
Louis I.
What I.
Red I.
Thank you very much. The motion passes.
This is the first time they've held this outside. They usually hold it inside, so.
Have they checked this out with the Board of Health?
Good question.
Well, I wrote to Christine earlier thinking maybe she'd answer me before the meeting. But anyway, I wrote to her and said, I'm sure you've thought of this, but run it by the Board of Health.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I just want to go back to item two about the recycling award.
Oh, yeah.
And I just.
You just cut out.
Can't hear you, Barney.
How about now?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, just to acknowledge that Lana Zamaro and Tim and Jen Gibbons did an outstanding job of collecting all the data that we had to submit. And it was a lot of last minute work, so thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you.
Very good.
I'd like also to comment on the recycling. So, Tim, you mentioned if we were better, we could get three times the money, something like that. Is there a recycling, is it Luna or is there a recycling committee?
There is a recycling committee. Lana's on it. Lana's on it, as is.
Rob Perry.
Rob Perry, yeah, and I'm the liaison to the recycling committee.
So maybe since you're the liaison, Barney, should we be brainstorming? I mean, it's frustrating to me because I'm a recycler to observe, you know.
You know, some of it is, I mean, you know, the the amount of solid waste that we're, that we have, the tonnage, solid waste tonnage, you know, we towns that have gone to pay as you throw, you know, get a certain amount of points for that.
Well, pay as you, pay as you throw has been shown to be unpopular in this town, so maybe we don't lead with that.
Saying the reason we, if you look at that sheet on the, that was included at the end of the, you know, there's a contract there that we have to sign to accept the money that shows what we're doing. And below that has the scorecard. And there are just some things, like we don't have any curbside recycling. So there are some things we can't get points for. But there are some things we could do, like we don't have an agreement with our haulers, which we should do. We don't have very many of them, and that's something that this committee could definitely do.
I mean, I can barely hear you, but I think what you're saying is there are certain things we can do, certain things we can't do. And I take it, but we, it just, I just say, as a citizen, I'm frustrated to observe in the time, you know, in my weekly run to the transfer station, a lot of non-compliance, you know, and simple things. I don't know if that would save us more money, but I guess I'd feel better. And then there was a good article in the mosquito. I don't know, maybe it was a summary. It was within the last few months about the, and Betsy's on, so maybe she can chime in and who wrote that. But it was a very good piece on, you know, the who does our recycling, what sort of the economics are. And I think there's a fair amount of skep, there's sort of a, even though we pride ourselves on being a green town, we're not really that green, as you point out. There's a lot of waste. And when I ask certain people, and I try not to be, you know, adversarial here, why they're not recycling something they throw away, the most common response is, ah, that, you know, they just put it back in landfill or we don't really get any money for it. I mean, there's a lot of, maybe there are myths about that and it sort of drives a skepticism and leads to, it's always an easy behavior to say, well, it doesn't matter, so I'm not going to bother to recycle. And as Select Board, is there something we can do? Can we, can we have Lana in here or you could talk to and we could maybe try to promote it more, try to address it more?
The last time it was brought to our attention, I wouldn't say that was a town that was necessarily against it. But the the wish of a couple of the selectmen was to do baby steps rather than just to introduce pay as you throw. And that we would have the Black Earth in first and we would see, you know, if that would make a huge difference. And we wouldn't need to have pay as you throw because people would start, because the heavy stuff in the trash is all the compostable stuff because that's just solid, it's a lot of water, basically.
Yeah.
And I don't think, I do think that the Black Earth has been a reasonable project because we went, we started with two barrels and now we have four. Of course, personally, I've been filling, you know, one, you know, at certain times of the year, I fill all of them for the town when we're making wine. But I actually now have personal Black Earth, so I'm no longer doing that. But I think we need to revisit. Did it make a difference? Do we have less tipping fees now? And maybe, you know, there will come a time when we have to make that decision for the town, whether they like it or not, that. And I'm not even thinking in terms of recycling. I'm thinking in terms of, you know, dollars and cents and tax rates. It actually costs, it's amazing how it incentivizes you to recycle.
Yeah.
And it doesn't have to be that expensive even, you know, you don't have to charge it in an exorbitant rate per bag. But as soon as people have to put that into that, something into a pay for bag, they'll think twice.
Well, except that, yeah, I mean, it's it's a topic for another time and we should, I think we should have a session with a healthy debate. My concern would be we're turning our poor DEP guys into traffic cops. Because what do you do with people who throw stuff away without being in the bag? And I'm for it, by the way. I'm just raising that as a.
Yep.
Well, the Recycling Committee can tell you, we, I just chatted with Lana the other day and they have not met, you know, since COVID began. So I think the first step is for that group, and I will, I will talk to Lana about this, getting that group to meet via Zoom. We should evaluate the Black Earth program and look at the numbers. And and then I think they they need to come talk with us about, okay, what are the, what are the steps that we're going to take moving forward? I do think there's a need for just another round of education.
Yeah.
And also, we had talked, you know, I was working with Gary on signage and then that all stopped. We were just talking about it in February and then that all, you know, went on hold because of COVID. So we should, we need, and also the fees. I don't know if you recall this, but we were, you know, realizing that the construction and debris, the way we were handling that was very, shall we say generous to the people that were using that bin and costing the town. So it's time to revisit a lot of things.
Yeah, if you think, yeah, if you could get that group together again, Barney, that'd be great. And by the way, I too, I also have a special interest in getting the oil recycling going again, even if we have to pay for the tests ourselves.
That would be, yeah.
It's relatively inexpensive for what you get and and very inexpensive compared to hazardous waste fees. Okay, thank you. Tim, actually, number five, this is the one we just talked about.
Number.
Mass Municipal Association.
So who's doing what on that?
On the, well, this is, this is in the, this is in the TA's report.
Oh, that, oh, I knew I seen it somewhere.
Right.
Yeah, the annual meeting of the MMA is in January. It's being held virtually this year. I think Alan and Kate attended last year. Kate's already signed up for this year. So if you want to take a look at the workshops that are available and let us know if you'd like the town to register you for that. That's something we can do.
Yeah, it was well worth attending.
Okay. All right, I'll do that. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, and then looking forward at our schedule for the 24th, the next meeting, we've got the continued tax classification hearing. Also, we'll more likely have a recommendation from the Insurance Advisory Committee to the Select Board regarding whether or not to make a change in the town's insurance, the health insurance carrier for fiscal '22. And we'll also have some easements for the board to execute. We've got the dates of the December meetings scheduled. At one of those meetings, Jim O'Shea will be back before you were going to meet next week and work work some more on the joint facilities plan that we had talked about a few weeks ago. So that's that's what's upcoming. Alan, I don't know if you want to kind of preview the board on what the Insurance Advisory Committee might be recommending or.
Yeah. Reason not to. It's MIA, which is the Massachusetts Insurance Consortium that many, many towns belong to, has proposed a health plan which would save the, over the current plans, would save the town and the employees about 5%, which comes out to about $100,000. And so we're looking at that. We were, one of the questions that came up, this is, it's a Blue Cross Blue Shield based plan. And one of the questions is, would the, would the town employees have a concern that they would have to perhaps change primary care physicians to go on the Blue Cross Blue Shield? The general consensus was probably not, since that's one of the most popular plans for providers in the country. But we, they said they would, they would canvas select employees to see whether or not that would be an issue or not. We're going to meet again on Thursday. And hopefully, maybe you can make a decision at that point whether to recommend that plan or not. And then, of course, in the longer term, we'll need to talk about whether or not all the savings will go, whether we'll split the savings 50% town employee, whether we go a little more for the employee, whether to go for a little more for the town. But as you remember, in the police negotiations, we said we would address the issue of the 50/50 cost share for insurance and we'll have to make that decision as soon as we decide what plan we're going with. So we expect that probably, probably on Thursday, I mean, I suspect on Thursday, we may have consensus of the Advisory Committee to bring a recommendation to the Select Board on the 24th.
That's right. Okay.
All right.
Everything in my report, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. Now we'll have the approval of the minutes and town expense warrants.
You don't want B as own?
Pardon me?
You don't want to do liaison reports?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, liaison reports. I wasn't, I didn't, I wasn't looking at my agenda. I was just turning my pages. Liaison. Do we have any?
I'll just say that the Municipal Facilities Committee is very happy that their last warrant has no list of projects attached because just as we feared, we discovered something already at the Police Department. It has to be rewired because when they were making a repair on something else, they, they knocked everything, all the computers and the lights and the everything out. And so in fact, tomorrow, they're going to have to be running on generator for eight hours while they rewire the whole place. Anyway, so thanks, thanks for supporting the rewriting of that warrant. I'll just say that. And then for the Housing Trust, I actually attended the MHP, Mass Housing, listening for a post for Western Mass, talking about affordable housing and it was a very interesting program. And I think, you know, we'll be talking about it at Housing Trust, but lots of good ideas about and and good connections, places we can look for help for moving along ahead with housing.
Kate, did you find, well, this morning you were asking whether or not the equivalent of a plot map is available online. I did go on and I found lots of information, but not that.
Right, I found all that. I knew where that information was.
Yeah.
There is no plot map online and they'll, they'll make me one.
Okay, thank you.
A hard copy.
I just wondered if you had found it.
No, I, I had gone to Patriot. You were on the Patriot site and you can find everything you want, you know, the tax rate and the the number of square feet and blah, 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 but you can't find it on a map.
Right, okay.
That's what I need. I need the map.
Yeah, actually, there is one online, but it's not, it's not an official one under town. It's on a, it's on another site where all, where the, where all the borders of all the plots are there, interestingly enough. It's a publicly available site. I can send you the link if you want.
Send me the link. That'd be great.
And I'd like to report on the master plan. Can you hear me okay?
Oh, yeah.
Very lightly.
Yeah.
Hey, here I go. So last night, the Planning Board signed off on the restructuring of the Master Plan Committee. And so Jack Trost was approved as the new chair. And I, I won't go into all the details about the structure, but I think it's a, it's a much more workable model. And the Planning Board also signed off on the intent to draft a job description and put into motion the process of hiring a project manager. It wouldn't be a full-time person. But that is a piece of the proposal that the Planning Board signed off on as well. And so that should be getting underway very soon. And I, I would like to be able to bring to the Select Board or have maybe Jack come at a certain point once he's got his feet on the ground and go over the timeline that we're talking about and the content.
That'd be great.
That's a good idea.
Where we're headed, yeah.
Yeah, we, we want to keep track of that because a lot of things hinge on it. And it's, I already feel like things are like jumping ahead of the master plan, like the Police Department and the Fire Department coming. It's like we've got to catch up and get that all going.
Right, right. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you, Barney. Anybody else for liaison reports? I've got two, well, one of my committees is meeting tonight against, at the same time we are. And then COA Board meets later this week, so I'll be attending that one as well. And the Insurance Advisory Committee.
Yeah, that's, that's a, that was, that's an important one.
Yep. Okay. Now we can go to. Okay, now we can go to the minutes.
All right, I move. We approve the minutes of the meeting of and I'm looking that I did.
October 27.
Thank you, October 27. As presented.
Um, I have one comment and it may mean a change. I don't know, but if you look at the section about the community aggregation proposal, it says, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, go ahead.
It says, let's see, residents who receive the note, blah, 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 all basic service consumers will be enrolled in the program as well. Now, shouldn't it be that they get enrolled in the local green product?
Uh, no, they call the local green product. I see what you mean.
Expensive one, isn't it?
No.
No, that's a default. Local green is a default.
Yeah, and isn't that what this is trying to say, that all basic service customers are enrolled in the default?
Yes.
Anyway, I just thought we might want to clarify that.
Yeah, just add the word default in front of program.
And the default program, yeah. All right, so then I.
I sent Jen a few other just little typo things.
Okay, so I I I move we accept the minutes as amended.
Have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote?
Arnold I.
Louis I.
What I.
Reed I.
Thank you very much. Minutes are approved as amended. Uh, all right, approval of the town expense warrants.
Barney, report them out or what do we?
Um, I move we.
They're there in the report and they were very straightforward. There was nothing unusual about any of those warrants this time around.
I move we approve the or accept the warrants as signed.
I mean, do we, do we even need that? Because since she isn't Barney been designated to do just that?
Yes, but apparently it's we we need to vote on it after after the fact, just to certify it.
Yeah, we have to, yeah. There's another word, but.
And I second.
Okay, okay, roll call vote?
Ratify.
Yeah.
Yeah, to ratify. That's the word.
Arnold I.
Louis I.
What I.
Reed I.
Motion passes. Thank you very much. Is there any further business before the Select Board this evening?
I just have a question. I know I asked this last time and I forgot the answer, but why are there two letters, one in November 30 and one December 7? It depends which one we latch on to or what?
For the aggregation?
These energy things?
Yeah, no, that one of them was a pre, the the official letter is so, you know, rigmarole, rigmarole, gobbledygooky, you know, formal language and it's not clear. So we wanted to send out a letter to warn people that they're going to get this letter and that they and that this is what it's all about and this is what you know, what you have to do.
And we're also having two public information sessions.
December 16th and 18th, I think.
Something like that.
And I I have it on my calendar. I'm planning on being there, but any other selectman would be select person.
I will be there as well.
Are those in the evening?
Yes, 7:00 p.m.
Yeah, it'd be good to get those, you know, into the mosquito too at some point.
They they.
They have been in.
Yeah, and they interviewed me at length. They're going to have a an article and we've also requested that they publish our pre pre notification letter.
Yeah.
As an open letter. I don't know if they will or not, but.
That was that was signed today and sent in.
And I just would like to acknowledge since Mary Lynn's on the phone on the call that I thought you did an excellent job, Mary Lynn, describing this in the last mosquito.
Absolutely. It was a great job. Yeah.
Yeah, very good.
Project is about, which is not easy to do in simple terms.
No.
That was great. Um, I have a couple of things. I just wanted to see if we could put on a future agenda or maybe there's a different way to do it, but one is sort of getting going on the replacement plans for the for Prizzle's position. And we had talked about, you know, wanting to look at look at what she's doing, thinking about the job description and and I know, Tim, you had said, you know, if we if we want to get somebody in to be able to work with her for over the summer, say, then we, you know, we really need to be thinking by, you know, early next spring, I guess we want to post something, right? And be able, so anyway, I I don't know what what the steps are or who who should start doing that, but I think we want to just remember we want that to happen. Any thoughts about that, Tim?
What's your last?
She gave us a year notice.
September something, but we had talked with her. I don't know if you were there, David, but we talked with her about trying to have somebody on board at the beginning of the summer to work with her, be trained. Yeah.
Then you you really should recruit, I mean, all these town positions, people who are looking for jobs are typically looking in the early spring or late winter, so you don't want to be too late.
That's why I'm saying I think we need to get on this and then be ready to.
Candidate selection.
Something, yeah. So, Tim, what do you envision is the is how we get to get going on this?
Yeah, I think one of the first step, I want to meet with Priscilla and review the job description, see if anything has changed in the 15 years that she's had the position. I'm sure she'll have some changes and then might want to convene a small working group with a member of the Finance Committee, member of this board.
Yeah.
We've done that in the past when we've been looking for finance directors and and talk about, you know, the timing and and, you know, some of the the strategy involved in that.
Is there any regard in addition we should be thinking about?
Maybe that's what I was wondering too.
I mean, all these turnovers, you know, give you that chance to think, well, you know, I know we've always done it this way. Is this really the best way to do it? Are there other better?
Yeah, no, there are, you know, some possible reorganizations that we could look at and probably don't want to talk about them on this call, but you know, it's premature at the moment, but.
Right. No, but so part of that working group, I think, before they start looking and and rewriting the job description, then should be thinking about that and I I would be interested in being involved in that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I agree. That's a good approach.
By the way, we hear you beautifully now, Barney.
Yeah.
Well, I'm I'm standing, you know, in the middle of my husband's study. If I go sit down in the chair, I go in and out. All right, and are we?
I think that's a good approach.
Yeah, and are we all set on the two contracts that were under discussion at our executive session?
Oh.
Last time?
Uh, well, one we've we've signed and the other one is still being negotiated.
Right. I haven't I haven't heard anything on that.
Okay.
Since our last meeting.
Okay.
I did, by the way, I did speak. We remember we all got a letter from RJ and I did. That's all been taken care of today.
Great. And and how about the woman that had spoke at the Community Input?
Oh, Madame Navio.
The last.
That's ongoing.
Yeah, she's, yeah, back to the back to the Board of Health.
Okay. Great.
All righty, anything further? Hearing none, I will accept the motion to adjourn.
I move.
I I heard two people, so that's a motion and a second. Roll call vote.
Arnold I.
Louis I.
What I.
Kate, Reed, Nay.
I mean, gosh, it you it's you got 50 more minutes to go, Alan.
I know, I know, I know. Well, this is this is meeting number four today, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Hey, all, thank you all very much. That's good. I will see you all again in the near future.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Good night.